All right, it's 6:30. Calling the order of town council meeting for Monday, December 12th, 2023. And Jimmy, you want to do the, start off us with a prayer? I know it's his pledge first, but we'll do the prayer first. Have to mix things up occasionally.
Okay, good. I have the thought that we want to build down the third year, and we're going to guide our conversation, our thoughts, lead and guide our, our things that we need to do for this town. We ask you, bless us again as what you can. We ask the same Jesus name, amen.
Amen.
Who has the pledge today?
Sandy.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Sandy, roll call.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
All right. Jimmy, I think you are next on this, police officer recognition.
Thank you, Mr. President. We appreciate you giving us the time to do this tonight. As, as most of you know, we had an incident at the school last Thursday morning that could have been disastrous. You know, through the staff and cooperation with the RSROs, it was diverted. This, this weapon that was found was hid so well that Alec had to search a couple of times to find it. But on the morning of December 8th, Alec, would you come up, please? With your big smile? Dr. Sanders, would you like to come up too? We'll include you in the present presentation. On the morning of December 8th, 2022, Richland Bean Boston Student reported that they thought a junior high student had a gun in his possession on the way to school. Officer Legend was immediately notified, and with the administrators and the staff, they located the weapon. This meritorious action indicates that the highly need for trained, uniformed police officers to be present in all of our school buildings. This recognition from Richland Bean Boston Corporation staff, also Police Department Command staff, presented this day, December 12th, 2022, by Chief Jimmy Durnall and Board President William Ellis. Derek, you want to get that?
Sure.
Speech, as they'd say. Okay.
I just want to really thank Alec. You know, you never want to see something like that happen in your backyard. And so Alec is a hero. But you know, Alec is a hero each and every day of the school year. He comes to work and he, he builds relationships with these children who are going to one day be junior hires and high schoolers and adults. And so I'm very proud to have Alec as our SRO. We have the best one in the state of Indiana, so.
Agreed.
Valerie Duor has some presentations.
I'm Valerie Duor. I am part of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And we feel very confident that our community is as wonderful as it is because of the school system, a great being as wonderful as it is. And so we are very proud of this officer as well. And we would like to let him know that with a little bit from us. As a veteran teacher of 40 years, I have to tell you, there are times that you feel totally exposed in a classroom. And SROs were not a part of my life, and I wish they would have been. I probably would have felt a lot better.
Thank you, I appreciate your, appreciate the time.
Thank you. Hold on just a second. Okay. Jimmy's not done.
The chamber also took up some reward cards for the student that turned the other student in, and we appreciate that. You know, we've got a see something, say something type atmosphere at the high school and junior high, and this sure came into, to full circle there last Thursday, because it really helped, really helped us out. So we'll take that up to her tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda. By the way, I like presiding over things like this. This is, this.
You like that?
Yes, I do, so. That'll work. All right, so we're approval of minutes for the regular meeting and work session, November 28th, 2022.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Epstein.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples. Action carries.
Action pay, accounts payable, vouchers, and payroll.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, that resolution 25-2202, surplus street department?
Okay. A few years ago, we had, we started the enterprise fleet management for the town, you know, and the plane department has a truck right now through the enterprise fleet management. The three trucks that the fire department originally had ordered was supposed to have got canceled, and they never did. They have came in, and so we're going to do the, the fleet management deal through the enterprise. We're going to do like we initially was going to do with the plane department's truck. It's going to go trade in for one of them. And then we are wanting to surplus two vehicles in the public works, one being in the street, the 2019 Chevrolet Silverado, and the other one's in utilities. It's a 2012 Chevrolet Silverado 1500. These two vehicles, the, if I say that's all right, Mike, the equity in the vehicle goes towards our lease. So.
Reduces the price.
Reduces the price, is what it does, so. And they're 2022 Rams is what they are, half ton Rams.
Four-door pickups.
Four-door pickups. So I'm asking you today to be, to, to go ahead and surplus these two vehicles. Also, to let you know, for the near future, we've got a 2012 F-250 that we're going to do in the fleet part two as well. And another vehicle's coming up for the inspector, is that right? For the building inspector. So we'll have a couple more trucks that we'll need to, in the future, surplus to do that into the fleet.
So to be clear, we want approval to surplus vehicles that we will let go as we transfer to leased vehicles.
Right.
Well, we need a motion every time this is done, or could this be a blanket?
We're not asking for permission to lease, we're just needing the trucks.
To surplus these trucks.
I'm saying, will this cover the other trucks that you need to surplus as part of this agreement, or do we need to do it each time?
We'll do it each time.
Okay. All right, any council?
You got a question, Scott?
So are these trade-ins, or are they being surplused?
They, we are, yeah, we're trading them in, and the value goes to the purchase of the, or the lease of the vehicles. For instance, Denise's vehicle, which is, is she a third year owner in it?
It's a 2021 Ford.
2021 Ford, so her new lease will be reduced from $511, these are rounded figures, to $362.
No, it's a 313.
313. So we are taking advantage of the vehicles that the fire department originally tried to purchase. They had incentives on all three vehicles. And we, initially, we were not, we were going to pass up the vehicles. And so they came to town because we was talking about lease, leases in the future. And then when we realized that we could take the equity in the vehicles we have now, reduce some of the lease, lease amounts, we took advantage of those incentives, and we'll have all new vehicles, and we're going to start leasing them instead of owning them.
I get that. My question is to Sandy, I guess, on this.
In this resolution, we put that we have a contract with Enterprise Fleet, and that these are going to be traded in.
I guess my question, to make it clear, and so we're not setting a bad precedent, I was under the impression with state law that as long as you're trading the vehicle in, we don't have to surplus it. It's if we're selling it on the open market, we have to surplus it.
Well, I don't know the answer to that, so I'll refer that to Ms.
Well, I looked at it, I'm happy to look at it again. I couldn't find anything that said that specifically, which is why we tinkered with the language. So, but I'll, I'll be happy to look.
Down the road here, that we're doing.
Please, trying to be.
I looked at, I was trying to find this in-between category, and I didn't see it, but I'll look again.
And this also just gives a little bit of tracking when I'm audited. Whenever I take something off of fixed assets, then I have some paperwork to show.
I just don't want to go down both roads repeatedly if we don't have to by law, making it more difficult for everybody concerned.
Any other council discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of resolution 25-222. I think that's what it's supposed to say.
Yes.
Surplus street department. Let's off on that one for the moment.
Okay, thanks.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 2022-18 to create a fund for local income tax development, local income tax economic development. Is this you, Sandy?
Yes, and this is when we started to get our local income tax public safety. State Board of Councillors required us to put that in a standalone fund. And so this is the same way. I'm creating a fund, so this will be isolated.
Any council discussion on this? Public comment? Seeing none, back to the council for action.
Well, this is the first reading.
Oh, first reading, we don't need action. Okay, first reading.
This one can wait till next time.
Yep, okay. We just need to have it by the end, before the, before it starts.
Before we start getting our draws, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. All right, ordinance is on second reading. Ordinance 2022-15, fixing of the salaries for budget year 2023.
And I had asked, you know, we're in the process of updating our salary ordinance, our personnel policy. And this firm suggested so much stuff be moved into the salary ordinance, huge amount of stuff. And I was not comfortable asking, putting that in salary ordinance before we passed the personnel policy. So then we got into a time issue. So I have not changed this salary ordinance, other than I found an error on the last page on the date. And I would just ask that you accept it as originally presented.
Any council discussion on this? Any public comments? Seeing none, back to council for action.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-15, fixing of the salaries for budget year 2023.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
No.
Pam Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Old business, do we have any that we need added? Seeing none. Flood report.
We have no flood report.
All right. Envision Ellisville update, I guess this would be in addition to what we just did today. Come on up, Dan.
Dan Rary. This afternoon, we had two Envision Ellisville planning workshops that were very well attended. I was very pleased that we had a combined attendance from both of them of, let's see, seven plan commission attendees, three council attendees, and six town employees attendees. Very, very good turnout and a very good discussion. I appreciate everybody coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, new business. Biden and Thaniel Utilities Contract Discussion. Who has that?
That'd be me.
All right.
We have Sandy, and I think, I'm assuming that Sandy gave you handouts as well, and I think we've had some discussions with some of the board members individually. At this time, I think about when we're down to our last five years, we've always reached out and looked for a vote of confidence for a five-year extension on our contract. One of the handouts is a number of the employees that either do daily or have touched Ellisville and, and their credentials. And I just, I think it's important you'd see the people that we have on staff that help, help us run our business and, and run your business as well. And, and then the, in, in the contract, there've been discussions of the town manager's pay. And I think Mike would like for it to go through BFU instead of having two W-2s and you guys having to pay payroll taxes and the other things that go with paying an employee. That actually save the town some money if we do it that way, and we, we'd really like to amend our contract to include that pay. And I think some of the other things, other important thing is we have always went by the CPI for our raise. And obviously, the CPI is much higher than 3% this year, and it's ran relatively low for the, sometimes flat, for the life of our contract. And we're like everybody else, we're going to get hit with inflation. And so we would like to change that to 5%. The ceiling on it, I can't remember, what else did we put in the bottom? That's the bottom. Is it? Yeah. So I entertain any questions you might have or thoughts moving forward.
And to be clear, from the town standpoint, the, my, my pay for being the town manager, which I'm going to start getting paid, thank you, that goes through the Biden and Thaniel contract, but would end immediately upon resigning or more likely getting fired. And so, and so, so I wanted to be clear that that, that salary disappears from the Biden and Thaniel contract if I hit the lottery.
I would like to make a request. In your original contract back in 2017, that's probably not your original, but one of the revisions, there was rate chart. And then since then, Rick would send me the CPI statement every year, and I, I've kept that in the file. But I'm currently being audited, and your contract was one of them they randomly looked at. And they requested that we get that rate structure each year. So along with your CPI statement, then just give me your rates on a printout, and I'll put it in the file, and then it's clear for them, the auditors each year, because then they look at what your contract says and what I actually, the checks I issue to make sure that I'm doing it properly.
That should not be a problem.
Thank you very much.
I think I do have those in my files.
Okay.
So I can provide those.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing that's important is that our, our name's changed, and we really need to change the name on the contract as well, so that you're protected in case there's a reason for you to be protected, and we're protected as well with our liability insurance. So we would make those changes as well. Though they be in minor, I think they're important to change that at the top of the contract.
Council discussion?
This is going to be voted on next time.
Yeah, we're not, I, I wouldn't think we'd be voting it on tonight.
There's not an actual contract in here, it's just, right, it's just your summary.
It's just a summary of what we just discussed. There was also another thing that we provided, and I'm sure you've read it from front to back, all of you.
Yeah, it's only 50 pages.
I do have a question. I don't, I guess I don't see the point in why we don't pay the town manager out of the town money like we do everybody else. I mean, to me, that would be like me having Sandy. When I do the poll recruiting, having Sandy to send my money for town council to them, letting them all, then letting them pay me for one check. I don't see that.
Well, I had personal reasons for wanting it, and some of it's retirement, and, and so I'm already collecting perf, and I just didn't want it to be a problem for me. It's the same amount of money, so it, and it goes away if I'm not here, so.
It's really, it's really no different than you paying us to be your managers of your utilities or your Department of Public Works. So it's still a professional agreement to fill all of those duties, and we're just adding town manager as one of our additional duties, if that makes sense to you.
And it is actually saving the town money because if he were an employee, then we would be required to put him under perf, which is 14.2% a year, and we would have to pay his matching social security and Medicare, which is 7.65% a year. So in essence, by contract, we're saving money.
And, and all you're doing is paying me, you're not going to provide me with a phone or a vehicle or gas or any materials. Everyone saw I do steal a pen, but that's, so.
We're, we're keeping track of those. What would be the, I mean, could we kind of break these two things apart? Because one thing I'm not fully comfortable with is passing something longer than the term of a town council member, so four years instead of five. It's, that's, so could we sever that and, or change that to, I mean, would?
Why don't you just limit the amount of time in the contract that you will pay Biden and Thaniel for my services?
Well, not necessarily, I'm talking about just you. I'm talking about just the contract in general. They want a five-year renewal. And it would put it out, what year would it put it out expiring now? If we did the five-year renewal?
2032.
Right, and so we're binding future town councils to this decision, and I, I don't know if I feel comfortable with that?
There's precedent.
There is. No, I understand that, I'm just, just telling you a concern of mine. And so could we add you to the contract without extending the contract?
That's between you and.
Okay.
When is your contract up? 2027. Yes.
2027, and you're wanting to extend it now to?
We've done that historically, kept it 10 years. It's getting harder and harder to retain certified operators, and I'm also looking at the future of, you know, BFU. We hope to never go away. Certainly, we keep, continue to grow. I can tell you, there is a shortage of certified operators in the state of Indiana. So the current, the current people we have working there may not be here in 10 years, and I'm pretty sure they won't be. So, you know, when, we're, we're on the same situation as what, discounted what William's talking about. We need the ability to say, hey, if you come to work for us, we got these contracts and the length of them. So I think it was important back in 20, whatever the year was, we, we'd done this as well, that we got a 10-year contract. And we've always, in, in the last of the fifth year, tried to extend it back to 10 years. But we'll do whatever you want.
So, I'm sorry, so it's 2027, and then you want it extended to?
2032.
2032. Okay, and a couple things, and I'll let you guys talk. One thing I've got a question about is the current line in the, in our salary ordinance and in the budget of the town manager's position. We left that $45,000 in there, correct, Sandy?
We did, but then I will, it's in the same, no, I'll have to do a resolution to transfer that money from personal services to miscellaneous professional.
Because what I don't want to happen is that we double pay because notoriously, we, we take his money away from him and give it to other departments. I want that money, if we do approve this, I want that money tacked into the BFU agreement, if you're, you understand what I'm saying? I want earmarked for that.
It's a general thing.
Right.
So right now, their agreement's paid for water and sewer money.
Okay, well.
But this will be new, and I definitely will be required to put it in a line to pay our contract amount. I can't leave it up in a personal services line.
Right. Okay, and then the other thing that I kind of want to talk about is once you get the contract that you're wanting to go, wanting us to sign, I would like to take time, and I don't know how the rest of council feels, but to have our attorney go over this with us, and if she has concerns and stuff, and I don't know, do we do that in executive session? Or would it be at a regular council meeting?
Or a work session.
Yeah.
It could be a work session.
Okay.
I think it could be an, an executive.
Okay, so what, what's the time limit you guys are planning here? What's the time limit, are you?
For what?
When does this need to get posted? For your salary, it would have to be by January 1st, correct?
Well, I can wait. I'm not, I'm not going to hurry. I mean, if, if I miss a couple paychecks, salvoi.
Well, you, you made the comment that the, the contract that we all read, every page, word for word, 50 pages.
Interesting, wasn't it?
Is that, that's not the final, is that what I, you said, Jeff?
That was not, that's not contract, that was history. To try to show, you know.
So my question is then, when will you have the contract ready for us to look at?
Well, we sent it to Darla first, when we sent it out to you, so she could, you know, look it over. And so she's wanted to answer when a contract could be, because I'll not be putting it together for obvious reasons, and Jeff's sent his proposal, so what, what contract is developed will be based on what the board wants to do.
And, and that's why I say maybe a work session then to discuss it with Darla and the rest of council.
It's going to be a minimal change, it's going to be, it's obviously going to be. We're going to add in the town manager's salary to it, so that'll have to be there, amended in there somewhere. And then the length and the terms.
And the CPI.
And, which is, which is part of the original contract. It's just changing those, and I'll highlight them. And then we'll just change it from Biden and Thaniel Utilities to BFU Inc., which is the name, we're doing business as Biden and Thaniel Utilities. So that's the only changes you'll see that you've had since 1995. But, I mean, I, we'll get that to Darla tomorrow, so she can share her thoughts. And the rest of it's negotiable, whatever the board, board's pleasure.
What's the current severability of the contract? Like if, if future town council says we don't want to do it?
The current contract has a four cause, in other words, if you guys would not be, you know, if the next board didn't want to put money into the sewer plant, and it was failing, and we didn't want our name on it.
Right.
And then it's same for you if we're doing things that are not what you've asked us to do. And so it, it has the ability to get out of the contract.
And it's rather short-term.
Yeah.
60 days, I believe.
60 days, I believe. Would, some people don't, they want it to be 90 days because they want longer, you know, you'd want longer time to make sure that.
Right.
You could find an operator, but those are all the things. We've never, obviously, we've been sitting here for 27 years.
Right.
So I'm not, those things don't, you can put 30 days on it if you want, so.
Was, was the operator at any time part of the town position? Or was it always Biden and Thaniel?
They were when I first came here, and when.
Obviously, they were when I first came here, that's why you were facing $25,000 a day fines.
No, I'm not talking about that one, but after you guys took over, wasn't it still an Ellisville employee that was an operator?
They, I was, I was the operator from the day I was hired and we had another person working at the wastewater plant. And then when we, in nineteen ninety-seven, when we built the new plant, we hired two people and they, for a short term, they were still Ellisville employees and then that's when we hired Mike and, and the contract got bigger and so they just became our employees at that time.
Two thousand is when their employees became. Our employees became their employees.
I think that's correct.
So, help me out here guys, cause I see it, we're kind of talking about two different but related things. One is the extension of the contract back to the ten-year mark, the other of which is the inclusion of the town manager's salary in the overall contract.
Right, actually, to be correct, one of them is including salary in the contract and the other is considering changing the CPI limit from three percent to five percent.
Right.
And extending the contract five more years, extending it out.
Okay, but.
So it's two different things.
Would you have an issue if we treat these as different topics, cause for the speed of it?
That's totally acceptable.
Were we doing an addendum to add the town manager now as we work through the contract so we're not sitting here three, four, five weeks and it makes it cleaner at the first of the year as to how he starts getting paid, if we just do the amendment to put him there now?
That's logical.
Now, my next question, what are we paying him per year or what would we be paying him per year if he actually took his salary?
Was it forty-eight?
Well, it was going to be forty-eight and then when we was talking about everything and we was pretty tight and we was taking two here and three there from all kinds of people's line, line and so I finally budge three thousand too, so it was, and, and I came up with the, the salary based on sixty percent of the department head's salary, theoretically, the old town manager was only supposed to work three days a week.
Yeah, it didn't work out that way.
Huh?
It didn't work out that way.
No, no, it did not and so, but anyway, that's, we ended up at forty-five thousand, so.
Okay, so what I would suggest to the council and hear me out before everybody says no, let's go ahead and kind of separate these out if they're agreeable to it. Go ahead and put forty-five in there if, if Mike's comfortable with that or whatever you guys are comfortable with for this year, but let's put it on an evergreen clause so it's not really a five, six, seven year, if this is agreeable to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Where it just continues rolling over every year, but let's also think ahead a little bit. At forty-five thousand dollars, we're getting an incredible bargain to have a town manager there. We know at some point, this town manager, sorry Mike, is going to leave us. So let's get ourselves used to actually paying for that town manager so it's not sticker shock later. So we add in an evergreen clause every year at plus five percent, every year it rolls over, or however, seven percent or whatever you want to do, because that way, we eventually get that salary to where he does leave, hopefully twenty-three years from now, we're paying him what we would be paying the next person as they come in, as opposed to having to make a forty thousand dollar adjustment or whatever.
And, and to Dan's point earlier, I have been trying to keep that salary in there and actually proposed to, to bolster how much it was because at some point, when I'm not here, we definitely will want to have a hefty salary in there so we can attract some talent.
So is five enough percentage a year, do you think, to get us where we need to go? Because you, only you know how long you're planning on staying.
Sure, I, I mean, yeah, that's fine, thank you. Yeah, that's.
No, I mean, not, not just to you, but do you think that gets us to where we need to go by the time you leave?
Well, I, I think it, the, yes, and, but the easy answer is, when I go, I think you guys will want to consider making it a full-time job.
Right.
Just from experience and I think by then, the growth, hopefully the growth and the activity will deem that a good idea.
Are you comfortable with the evergreen rollover so we don't have to worry about?
Yeah, evergreen's perfect. I, I'd never even thought about using.
That way we're just rolling?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And it's Christmas, so.
I, I, I get what you're saying, so I really do on, on that and I agree, we have to get that salary built up to where we can replace him, but I'd rather that to be, instead of contractually obligated to be part of the discussions like we do for the other employees.
Well, see, it's a problem when we're doing it this way, he's not another employee, he's a contract. So you could set it at whatever we give the other employees or five percent, either way. So if you give him seven one year, I mean, this year, thank God.
Right.
They're all getting much more than that. Well, he would be left behind. So we're trying to bump up that salary a little bit at a time and please God, never make it to where we're, once again, having to tell him, sorry, there's nothing to bank, you can't have a raise. So i- if we make it five percent, and I'm just guessing at that, that way, that contract, we know what the fixed cost is going in for the next year before we ever talk to anybody else about the raises.
Well, but how would that work if it is commingled with the contract?
Just like any other line item, if, if, again, you go to McDonald's, you want a Big Mac, you're paying seven dollars. You want a Big Mac and fries, you're paying nine dollars. You want a Big Mac, fries and Coke, you're paying thirty-two dollars. I mean, it's just whatever you select off the menu.
But the CPI would be included in their contract.
No, not in regard to the town manager.
So the town manager would be a separate line?
Within the contract, yeah, cause it'll have an evergreen clause with it, as opposed to the total CBU contract, or, I'm not CBU, sorry, Biden Fanyel contract.
And what was the reason, again, you don't want to be paid through?
Pardon? I'm sorry? Well, I, I just, it'll make it easier for me to get paid from one entity and my retirement, some considerations for, I'm not, I'm not, if, if I was a town employee, I don't know if I'd be perf or not, but I just didn't want to go that route. So it's not a real big deal, but, but it, it just made my life a little easier and it didn't, money's money and so I just asked for that. And by the way, I would be a Happy Meal, so.
You'd be what?
A Happy Meal.
Oh.
Well, it could be a big difference if you're a perf employee and you have to stop drawing your retirement.
So are you saying you'd have a cheap toy inside or?
Well, I'll just make you smile.
Well, we're going to leave that one behind. See what I'm saying, Mike? It could be a big difference if you become a perf employee because then I don't know you could draw your perf, could you?
Well, he's already drawn from a previous job, but I think after a certain time, you can start over.
Yeah, well, I didn't know, but, but, but at the end of the day, this just makes, it's, it's something I asked for. I, it just, it feels like the right way to do it for me.
And I could be wrong on the perf bet.
Yeah, and I, well, I, this would take care of that.
Well, I think it's a lot of good things to think about and hopefully we can get it going and, because personally, I think you should have been drawing a salary all along. I mean, you're doing the job, you needed to pay for it and that didn't really sit right with me in the beginning when you were doing it for free, so.
Seemed odd, didn't it?
Yeah, just didn't seem right, so.
Who wanted you to back pay?
But, but, but I, I want to remind what Sandy says, by doing it this way, it's a way of saving money and there's nothing wrong with that.
Jeff, could you bring us contract language by next meeting so we can, particularly for severing these from the overall contract?
Yeah, I think I, I'll, I can write it like I think you wish and then if you need it, if it needs to change, and we'll try to, we'll get it circulated to Darla first and then she can red mark it and send it back to me and then we'll circulate it to you before the next meeting, well ahead of time. That way, if somebody would like to see a different or a comparable contract that's read a different way, we could have two and then you could make up your mind.
Well, I would love to see a work session before, so.
So, but right now.
That's not going to happen before the first of the year with Christmas and everything else.
The only way we would, well, because not everybody's going to be here next meeting. I was going to say, normally we would do it before the next meeting, but then we've got Christmas week, so I, I really don't know logistic-wise how we would do that.
If, and you guys said, I mean, you're still under a five-year contract, so the only hurry would be your salary for the, the town manager to start in January first, which I'm fine with the back pay.
That's why.
I mean, whatever, if, if we don't get.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
And you only tell us once a month. I mean, if you have to wait and make your decision, this first payroll or the first council meeting in January, you can say it's retroactive January one.
We don't, we don't bill you for January until February first.
February, okay.
So we have time.
So, because we're, if, if they're okay with it and everybody to be cleaner, it's two different discussions, as Scott and I have said, that one is attaching the salary, number two would be extending the contract.
Yeah, I think that's a longer discussion.
Right.
Attached to the salary, at least in my world. You know, attached to the salary seems like a no-brainer to me. That's why I wanted to break it out separate, have him pull up an addendum to the current contract and then we vote on the entire new contract when it comes back as a clean sheet, if that makes sense. Is that doable for you guys?
And, and we still have January, so we have time.
You got two meetings, you got one more meeting this month and two next month before we would ever, we bill, always bill in three years, so.
Um, do we need a work session just for the, the salary thing? Is that what you're saying? The addendum?
No.
I mean, I can see for the contract, but.
Well, I just think maybe just have it together and that way, if we still have questions, we can ask the questions then, so. We have time, guys. I mean, what's the hurry, you know?
Certainly, this work session could be prior, prior to a meeting.
Right.
After the holidays, just get it and go from there.
I mean, since a lot of the council won't be here next meeting, it's.
We better make sure we have a quorum.
That's true.
Yeah, I know, me and Trevor won't be there.
Any other council discussion?
There's a lot of business to take care of the last meeting of the month, so, of the year. So I'm telling you, please, if you don't think we're going to have a quorum, let's change the meeting date and rearrange because I will need you to sign off on encumbrances for next year, major.
Do we need one this, rest of the month?
Mm-hmm.
We have to have at least one meeting more this, this year. And the next one's scheduled for December twenty-seventh, so if for some reason, we do not have a quorum, I need forty-eight hours to repost.
I will be here.
I should be here. I will not.
No.
Pam will be here.
I should be.
Cause that's a Tuesday night, just to worry rather than Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any public comment on this discussion at all? All right, so the direction, I think the consensus is we'll, should we put this on the first meeting in January then?
Which is, which is appropriate to do.
Let me see, I think that.
Nine.
Nine. Put on the agenda for the ninth?
Yeah.
But make sure we get the information a lot sooner and then via email, just let's get a consensus whether we need to schedule a work session beforehand. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on it from council? All right. Next thing on the agenda is a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Ellisville, the Ellisville Department of Parks and Recreation and the Ellisville Youth Sports League. Is this you Jimmy or is this Darla?
This is me.
All right.
I put together this memorandum of understanding based on conversations that the town council members had with members of the Ellisville, and I'm not going to get the name right necessarily, the new youth sports league.
Ellisville Sports and Youth.
Youth Sports League. And I've incorporated the comments into this memorandum of understanding. The attorney for Ellisville Youth Sports Inc., Dan Seer, was out of town for part of next week and he did receive it and he noted that he would review it with his clients and get back to me. So it might be appropriate to table it, but if the town council members have any comments or suggestions, I would appreciate it if you would tell me so that we could make changes or make Mr. Seer aware that the draft that I sent him might need some toggling, so.
Any council discussion on this?
Well, I appreciate you, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, I think we should table it.
Yeah, I agree. I, I appreciate all the work you put into it, Darla. Looks like you covered everything we, we discussed at the meetings. Have they seen the copy of this?
I sent it to Mr. Seer and to the president of Ellisville Youth Sports Inc., Martha Heidenreich, Heidenreich.
Did Martha get back with you?
She did not.
Okay.
And she did send in a suggested job description for our new part-time, so it's a start and I gave you each a copy of that. I just received this today and she also told me that they were going to give me a check for two thousand dollars so that I can go ahead and get the checking account opened up and that they will be transferring both their electrical and the water and sewer bill into the town's name and that two thousand dollars will cover those costs until they start recruiting for baseball.
And we're working on a meeting with, is it Martha?
Yes.
Yes, Martha and Jimmy and Marty Stevens. We're supposed to get with him because we lease ball fields from them, so we're trying to get a date where we can get, talk to him.
Any public comment on this? Any more council discussion? Seeing none, moving on to the next item of business. Bloomington Economic Development Corporation has four seats for the Town of Ellisville, one for the town council, one for the town manager and two general member seats. Do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, I'll start it then I'm going to refer to Darla. So I became the ex officio member of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation when we joined a few years ago. I, I don't know if it's two or three years, I'd lose track of time. And so I did not understand that we actually had four seats available, one on the executive council and then one, and then three just regular members. Help me out if I say the wrong thing, Jen. So I, I just did not know that and so it's came to light and so there's some interest in the seats and one of the seats I definitely would like to have Denise assigned to and my question is, do I assign those or should the board assign those and, and how, how do we work through this? Because we'll eventually send an email to Jen and, and, and so I need, I need to know how to proceed.
Hi, can I?
Go ahead.
Good evening. So, Richall, thank you so much, because we're delighted to have the Town of Ellisville so involved in the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We serve all of Monroe County in fostering economic development. In terms of the two seats, so, and this is the same for Monroe County for the city of Bloomington and for Ellisville. So typically, the executive for that local government sits on our executive committee and then we also have one member from each of the councils that sits on the executive committee and participates in monthly meetings. And then the two additional liaisons are invited to our monthly board meetings, so we have eleven of those throughout the year. And it's really important to us to make sure that Ellisville is really well represented in community-wide conversations and that we're fully supporting you. So when we recently were doing an audit on just making sure that you had your full membership benefits, we realized that we wanted to include all four liaisons and typically, our organizations that are members include leaders or rising leaders within the organization.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. And so, and so I was worried about setting a precedent just on our behalf and then come to find out that somebody from the board should be on the executive board as well and so that spot's open. So Pam had shown interest and, and asked me to look into it and so I just need to know how we proceed to make this all happen. William, and I thought we set a precedent when, when he did it, he'd asked to be on it and they said yes, so I, I misunderstood. So William's currently on it and I've talked to William and Pam and so I need to know who says what to whom to get this make, make this happen.
Okay, I guess that's a good question. What does Jen, what did the charter or the organizational docs for the BEDC say about how these four individuals are to be selected? Is it just left to Ellisville?
Yeah, so typically, the way we operate is the lead, like liaison from the member kind of makes those decisions, so that's why the question went to Michael Farmer. I know for Monroe County Council and the city council, for the council seat liaison, they typically decide amongst themselves who they're going to appoint and then it would really be up to you, working with the organization for the two other seats, who you think would be a best fit for the type of work that we do together.
So it sounds like the council would have a pick and then the council could decide whether Mike Farmer picks the two general member seats or whether the council wants to do that.
Do we need?
Do we need to do appointments for that, Darla?
I don't believe so, no.
Well, we, we do all our appointments the first of the year, first meeting. I don't know if this needs to wait till then, or.
That would be fine with me. I wanted to bring it up so we could get it clear, everybody know what's going on. And maybe that is the appropriate time to do it. That would be fine.
Just get, what's everybody else think on that? Jen?
Yeah, just wait.
Do you have any meetings scheduled between now and?
The first one is the first Thursday of January, I believe that's the fifth.
Okay, so now we'd miss one. Okay. But this, the way we'd be on the same cycle?
And if you'd like some, a proxy to sit in on the fifth for, from council, you're most welcome.
Okay.
Who's on it right now?
I am, but I've not been able to really attend because of the timing of it.
When you guys started this, wasn't it the town council president that was on it and?
And then I couldn't keep making the meetings by where the time and date, so Mike started going in my place.
And then I think I took over during COVID because I was at a few of the meetings, so I think it stuck to the town council president at the time, so. You know, I, I feel it should be the council appointment just at January or at the first meeting with all the rest of them's fine. And then keep Mike on it too. Is that what everyone's thinking?
And the two general member seats, are those appointed by Mike or how?
Um, I mean, to, how you all. To make that decision is fully up to you, but we would typically look for the lead liaison to just let us know who those people are.
And I'm fine either way. I mean, if you decide, then I don't have to.
It makes it cleaner because all the other boards of commissions are filled from this seat as opposed to.
Right, I mean, so we do the appointments for, yeah, I, I agree.
Everybody takes the weight off their shoulders.
Yep.
And there's no party involved in it, is there?
No, there's no partisan breakdown.
If it helps for those other seats, for example, in the city of Bloomington, there's individuals who work closely with economic development issues and so they fill a couple of those seats.
That's why Denise would be perfect for one of the seats.
I'm sorry, I missed it?
No, I just said, that's why I suggested Denise would be perfect for one of those seats.
Oh, yeah.
And then I might suggest, if you guys are open to it, if Pam's interested in it, William, you just make her your proxy and she could go to the first meeting and then we can appoint someone after that.
I'm good with that. That way she doesn't, you need a written proxy or is this good enough? Pam, you're my proxy, how's that? Alright. Any public discussion on this? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright.
I, I, I have, excuse me.
Yes.
And thank you. I have one more agenda item.
We had a public discussion on the last.
Okay.
So can someone speak to the general members? Is it of the community? Is it the town of Ellisville? Is it address related? Is it, I mean, are there
I assume it'd be in the, the town limits of Ellisville.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you could.
So typically with our, all of our, three of our local governments, it's someone who works for the local governments that participate is one of those liaisons.
I think she was talking about the general member seats, though.
Uh, yes, yes, that's amongst the four.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so I, I apologize.
Oh, actually, any other public comment? Okay.
I apologize. I did not manage to get Lynn Stafford, who we'd already planned to be here from Drive Clean Indiana. Y'all got a card from him. I've been working with him and talking to him. And I think part of my job is to bring innovation and new ideas to the town. Whether we think they're good for the town, that's one thing. But after talking to Lynn several times, I invited him to come and he has a short presentation of why he would like for him, for us to consider what he's talking about. And so Lynn? And I apologize, it was not on the agenda. My fault.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Farmer, Chief Durnall. I'm Lynn Stafford, I'm with Drive Clean Indiana. Drive Clean Indiana is the clean cities organization here in the state. I think probably the best way to describe what we do is to try to language how, how it was formed and our purpose, and that is to essentially support national energy and security initiatives and develop relationships for the advancement of domestic affordable fuels and to implement sustainable transportation solutions. That's what we do every day. We work on and off road in, in doing these endeavors. We work with businesses, with municipalities. We're up in Lake Michigan with tankers who, folks that are looking for lower costs and we're getting them out of diesel into better fuels. The technology that's coming down the line not only includes electric vehicles, but also hydrogen. There's lots of stuff on the drawing board right now. In regard to EV and everyone's perception of, of electric cars or hybrids, what I can report is that to my knowledge, there's no real R and D right now significant that is being spent on developing engines. All the money's going into EV, so this is not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And I'm here tonight to have the opportunity to share with you that there's just multiple funding opportunities, a lot, for introducing EV charging stations. I wrote some of these down. There's, as well as new vehicles, fleet replacement programs. As a result, there'll be additional tax credits. And what we'd like to do is have a chance to work with you and develop a plan and be a partner with you along the way to your success. Starting with having a vision, a strategy for where you are now to where you want to go and work with you to make sure that you accomplish that. The, the monies that's coming in on a federal level, and that's what the clean cities groups do. We act as a conduit between state and federal to bring the funding in. As well as we do project management, there's a whole host of things that as conversation continues, that we could be in service to you in different ways. We also do first responder training and that would include regular fuels. We do grant writing. And I mentioned first responder training. There's just a whole list of things. Currently, we're working with utility companies across the state in an effort to satisfy the NEVI program, the National EV Infrastructure for charging stations that will, are purportedly to be every fifty miles. Seventy-four, sixty-nine, et cetera, all around, all around the state. And so the utility companies have never really worked together, so that's sort of interesting and they're learning how to play nice. These are all designed and built for next year. So there's a lot going on in this area. What I'd like to propose to you is that you consider coming on board. We start with a fleet survey. It's a fleet census of what's going on in your, in your, in your city, in your town. And from that census, we're able to tell. It's like a quick snapshot for you to understand where your emissions are, where there might be cost savings. And it will inform you on future buying decisions as well. We are a member-based organization. And I'll just pass along if anyone has any questions. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have more of a formal presentation, but I just wanted to share that much with you. In that you might give some additional conversation and discussion along the way here.
You know, my interest is, when I talked to Lynn, who he talked about propane. And, yeah, and, and so we got some feedback from the board that was not positive. But I think EVs are in everybody's future. And Lynn mentioned that we could get grants that would pay for us to put charging stations in, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, and so I thought it might be worth, it might be a good start if, you know, if, even if we don't start buying EV vehicles immediately. I think maybe if a grant would pay for a couple of charging stations in town, it's something that would be good for the community. And it's just another draw when people are passing by, you know, if they pull into our community to charge up. I don't know, I, I, it's just, it's a consideration. So I, I at least wanted to expose you to it. And so if it drives further conversation, great. And I think the best thing to do, if anybody's interested on the board, is to talk to Lynn directly. If you talk long enough, you hear things that might be interesting as far as what it could do for our community.
Certainly with your fleet, if that's where it starts. There's been perhaps some interest in, in looking at a number of charging stations around your own fleet. Perhaps law enforcement. And then from an economic development standpoint, there's downtown, and it's, it's a nice thing to be on the progressive side and demonstrate to the citizens that in fact you're, have an eye on the future.
Any council comments or discussion? Alright.
Do you have any kind of cost analysis to someone who's converted to the electric police cars to like how much the total investment and then the cost savings on fuel might be?
We will, we, yes, we do. And we do that after we do the fleet assessment, but I'm sure that I could get someone in the back room to speak with you in regard to. We work with municipalities all across the state. For instance, say Muncie, Indiana, which is a, a larger town. But they're C and G. And the thing about C and G that usually starts with refuse. And it's a big expense to put in C and G, millions of dollars with pipe, pressure. But once that C and G station is built and they're using it for refuse, what, what everyone realizes is that the more horses go into the trough, the faster the return on investment. And at that point, that's when the rest of the fleet would consider converting to a buy fuel C and G vehicle that includes law enforcement. The upside of that would be, in the case of Muncie, is that they, there's no range anxiety. It's a program that's been going successfully for the last seven or eight years and they're very happy with it. And they too are looking at, they're dipping their toe into hybrids as well on the police force in regard to, to electrics. But what will happen in the meanwhile, you can save a lot of money.
So just to be clear, I, I don't have rose colored glasses on when we talk about this. You can't hardly get an EV car right now. And, you know, to think that our fleet would ever be all EV, I, I know I won't be here. But I, I just thought that we should be exposed to the technology and, and the idea that there might be avenues to get charging stations. Whether we do anything about it, really, that lead should come from the board, but thank, I, I thank Lynn for coming and letting us know about it.
I appreciate the opportunity. Any other questions? All good?
Uh, we're all good.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Mike, did you want to talk about something else with an article?
Yeah, I was going to do it, supervisor's comment.
Okay, alright. So we'll go next, privilege of the floor. Any public comments on anything? Not covered?
I'm Ron Van Devene, building inspector of town Ellisville and also resident of Ellisville at three-two-three West Blackfoot Drive. I want to thank Mike Farmer, all the supervisors here, the town council for your support with this raise. It's going to help each and every one of us. It's going to keep a lot of us here. Second of all, I wanted to mention about the youth sports. They're having a meeting at the library tonight. That's probably why none of the board members were here. My grandson played this year and it was tremendous on what happened at basketball. We just wrapped that season up. We actually got to take all the kids to one of the basketball games, high school basketball games, and I've never seen so many smiling faces. So it was great. Even Jeff saw that. And I want to thank each and every one of the town employees. As a resident of Ellisville, I truly mean it that each and every one of you guys are family and special to us. And that goes from public safety, street department, utilities, to the office people. And I appreciate that. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
I'm not really sure how to follow, follow that, but I just wanted to say on behalf of the B E D C, one, thank you for your engagement, but also thank you for your engagement in the Economic Vitality Project. I wanted to give a quick update on that. That's our Monroe County-wide initiative to convene people to address some of the biggest economic development challenges we're facing, including jobs creation, workforce, land use and infrastructure, quality of life, as well as other areas. Thank you to Michael for being a part of our steering committee for that. A quick update for you is we're honing in on a final plan and we'll be talking to partners that will be agreeing to be a part of that plan in January and hoping to unveil that plan in February for implementation starting afterwards. It dovetails really, really nicely with the Envision Ellisville Plan. I know Clark Grinder from our team has been leading on that from, from our side of the house and engaging with Envision Ellisville. And the goal of the Economic Vitality Project is to support existing initiatives like Envision Ellisville and we want to make sure that you're well represented across the community. So just wanted to thank you for your engagement and support.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask the council, as the building inspector, last year I gave you a end of year report. Do you guys have it in or, you know, or do I burn paper and ink? Okay.
Electronically, it's fine, though.
Electronic is better.
Thanks very much.
Sandy, alright? Chris Klaus, deputy fire chief. December tenth, we, we held our annual awards ceremony for the fire department. And I want to recognize a few people that are here tonight. Kip Hedy has had twenty years in with the fire department. We've reached some milestones. Ronnie Van Devene has had twenty years with the fire department. And Kenny Parrish has had twenty-five years with the fire department. So if we could, give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Can we get, get you up for a picture?
Yeah, after the meeting would be good for that. Alright. Any more public comment? Alright, seeing none, supervisor comments, Mike?
Sure, I'm going to talk about something that's just itching me too hard. I'm going to have to talk about it. So a lot of people read in the paper, the dangerous mile about highway forty-six. And I'm complaining to the HT right now, it seemed to be a hurried, sensationalized story. I found out that almost all the quotes, or what seemed to be quotes, came from a CATS meeting. And they never talked to me. And so I, I know everybody's concerned about the highway and everybody uses the highway and a lot of people goes fast on the highway. So I, I just wanted everybody to know that indeed we have talked to NDOT. They didn't say we couldn't or couldn't have anything. We could or couldn't have anything. They came to the, the town, they had four people there, they were all very intelligent. They seemed to be well-educated about how our town's roadway went through and they knew all about it. They talked to me and Denise for probably two or three hours and. They talked to me and Denise for probably two or three hours, and they are going back and they are studying some of our issues, whether it be speed, traffic lights, right turns off Arlington Road, and there was something else I can't remember, but it was not that, it was just a, a small thing. But anyway, they are, they are looking into how we use Highway 46, and, and they're going to look at the crashes and this, that, and the other. So it, it seemed to be a sensationalized story, and the truth is, in the last 12 months, we've had 24 accidents, and quite a few of those are just fender benders, hardly any of them are at intersections, and none of them are at Starbucks. So to single out some, some of our, our businesses and how dangerous it is to come out of them, if you're not paying attention and you're going too fast, obviously, it's dangerous to be driving on the highway. And other than that, we're looking into how the highway affects us and how we affect the highway, and we're letting, leaving it to the professionals, and that would be the Endot people who control the road anyway. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I, and, and if everybody goes, well, you might be too harsh on the HT, well, I'm pretty sure it was a hurried, hurried article, and I'll probably get in trouble with them for this, but one of the accompanying pictures has the mayor of Bloomington looking at lead lines on the east side of town, and they use that to, for illustration on part of "The Dangerous Mile." So anyway, not too happy about it. I don't like sensationalized social media, media, or papers, or any kind of media. So I wanted to put it to rest that we're looking into it and we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Thanks.
So a couple of years ago, we had a study done, traffic count. And if I recall correctly, the average roadway usage, so both ways, east-west, of the 46 as it went through Elletsville was about 50,000 cars a day, 25,000 in, 25,000 out. And of course, some of them's running around town. And that's the average. That, folks, is 18,250,000 vehicles a year running up and down 46. We had 24 accidents. Jimmy looked at them, I looked at some other stats. And correct me if I'm wrong, the vast majority of you looked at were at intersections, correct? The vast majority I looked at further east were at intersections. And, and again, I get the, the presumption, and I don't mean that in a negative way, that speed is the issue. The issue is not speed, the issue is people not stopping for the red light. 24 accidents out of 18 million trips, I'll even have that. So nine million trips for 25,000 people on average a day, and you had 24 accidents, most of them at intersections. The issue is not speed, the issue is people not stopping for the red light. Now, people not paying attention is slamming into people who are stopped at the red light. So let's not have a knee-jerk reaction to something and inadvertently start moving that bubble away where it should be. So let's concentrate on education about stopping for the red lights as required by law. Let's talk about the use of the center turn lane on 46, which is a turn lane, not a travel lane. You don't get out of it, you get to go a quarter mile. You get out of it, you stop, and then you can enter traffic. That's the way the law's designed it. Again, folks, you're right, there are definitely people who speed down 46. But to put that as our primary focus, I will tell you, at least in my opinion, is a danger because then we're missing the true lesson learned here, which is people failing to stop at the red lights. And when you look at the sheer numbers of it, I am sorry for anybody who got hurt and absolutely anybody who lost their life. But when you're talking about 24 accidents, even if we have it, nine million trips, if somebody wants to do the math on that, it begins at point zero something or other. So the issue is not overtly massive speed, the issue's people not paying attention to what the state law already has there. So please take that to heart when we start talking about sensational journalism, because Mike's correct in that fact. But let's take the lessons learned that are learned in data, not the lessons learned where we think we see something. Because the data shows us that it's fair to stop at the intersections or fair to stop when other people are stopped. It's not paying attention going down 46, not anything else beyond that. That's all I got to say.
All right. Thanks.
I had one other thing to say. So for the employees and the raise, well-deserved, and the board approved it, it's, it's for them, you should thank, not me. And anything I had to do with it had to do with the collective department heads. We were one with this, like last year's budget and this year's budget, all things were considered. And we understand the seriousness and, of getting a raise, let alone a $10,000 raise. And so we, as employees, all of us intend to earn that and keep earning that, and so, but it's, it's not me, it's the collective department heads that put this all together.
Jimmy?
Thank you all. I speak as the park board president. I attended the meeting that Ronnie was talking about, this September 14 here. We had 25-plus people there tonight, what they call their fallout meeting for the spring and fall, or spring and summer, uh, sports. So very excited, they're ready to go. I talked to Jason Barrett and Mrs. Henrich, I think that's her name, and they're excited about it. They're, they're excited. I talked to Sandy, they've got things worked out with her. The job description for Zonker needs just a little bit of update, I'll give money put to that when they do that. Thank you so much for supporting that. I think it's going to be great for Elletsville, hopefully great for Ked, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, we've had these meetings for 27 years, and I've never seen this many employees at, at a meeting. I, I was thinking to myself, I mean, there's firemen, policemen, and obviously utility and street, and a lot of the office staff, and I'm just proud to be their coworkers. There's, we are blessed with a lot of good people that work for the town of Elletsville. It's good for you to see them as well, I'm sure. We go about our business every day, and for them to get this raise, I think, is a Merry Christmas to, to all of us. So I'm proud to be your coworkers. You should do yourselves the same.
Yep.
I got a little business. At the Elletsville wastewater plant, we have a flooding problem, which floods out our motor control center during rain events. We've got a dry creek bed that goes right over one of our junction boxes that we need to move, and it's going to take quite the, the effort to reroute the water around the wastewater plant. So we took, got a couple prices, what we come up with. One is from Tom Hedy, and the other one's from Tom, help me if his last name?
TNM.
TNM, yeah. TNM was $6,800 to, we need to remove about 25 trees, and they're going to put them on the ground safely for us. And Mr. Hedy's bid was $4,000, and I would like to take the low bid and get that job done. I'm not sure.
How many trees?
Uh, probably, I'm, I'm guessing 25.
Oh, 25 and?
A lot.
$4,000?
$4,000 and 800. I don't even know if I need a, I don't know if we need.
Let me help.
Yeah.
This has to be done, and it needs to be done soon. Like, I need a, we need a vote.
Is there a line in your budget or anything that we can take that out of, or where does it need to come from?
It'll come from wastewater and...
Yes.
It's an enterprise, and, and they do a budget as a courtesy for the council, but...
We have to make it.
Yeah. They're not, it's nothing like the general fund.
All right. So do we have council discussion on this? Council action?
I make a motion we approve Hedy, is it Hedy's son? To revert the water so that the junction box doesn't flood?
No.
It's to cut the trees.
Drop the trees.
Our, our, you're going to see, uh, dirtwork.
What he said.
So there's a motion to approve the bid for $4,000 to remove trees at the utility plant.
And to come out of the wastewater budget, correct?
Thank you.
Please wait till January before you start.
We have a motion made?
Okay, William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Saker?
Yes.
Scott Holdem?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Kevin?
I'd like to thank the council for the salary ordinance and budget approval. It was much needed. It puts the firefighters a lot closer to where the competition is, and I'm very optimistic that this will at least slow the revolving door around, slow it down. So thank you very much, and I know the firefighters, thank you.
I'll just kind of echo everybody before me. Thank you very much for approving the salary ordinance. Also, we wrapped up our leaf pickup for the season. Everything went pretty well, normal, as normal could be. And since probably seeing you two at the Christmas, Merry Christmas to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise?
I also want to thank the town council for approving the budget and the salary ordinance. Thank you very much. And I also wanted to let you know that we were awarded a community impact grant from the Community Foundation of Bloomington in Monroe County to move the log cabin up to Town Hall to set alongside the Heritage Trail that will be constructed. The grant's for $44,152. Total project cost is estimated at $88,304. And what that will do for us is move the log cabin from its location up to Town Hall, site preparation and preservation of the cabin, so it will sit there for many years to come.
And the money will, our side of the money will come from the ARPA fund.
Yes.
When are they going to do that?
I'm sorry?
When are they going to do that?
When, I met with them today over Zoom, and they're going to give us till June 30th of 2024 to get it done. I estimated we would probably relocate the cabin in the fall. We have some site work we'll have to do so the truck can get into the site, and, but about the same time, I mean, the summer, we're going to start the trail work, so I wanted to give Public Works a little time to get the trail work going and then switch over to prepare the site for the cabin. Yeah, I'm sorry, fall '23.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, one more thing. I want to thank Denise. That's been a long, drawn-out thing. I've been involved with the senior citizen board forever, and that cabin has bounced back and forth from, from different people. And Denise, just jump right on, I'm tickled to death, it's going to be preserved and moved up here, because Morris Enright worked his butt off back in the 60s to get that thing up here. So, and again, I'd like to thank the council for approval of the pay increase, it's really appreciated. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sandy?
Well, I better say thank you, or I'll just be all duck out. So thank you very much. It's been nerve-wracking a few times, but you guys came through for us, and I know that everybody here really appreciates it. So thank you. And you did it just in time for me to retire, so now you know, I may have to stick around.
Yeah. All right. Any council comments? Okay, seeing none, meeting is adjourned.